Chat. So, all right. Awesome. Thank you. Let's call our meeting to order and let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, indivisible. In your territory, in justice.
Right. Thank you. Good evening. I am the Board of Education President Julie Doan, and I'd like to welcome you to our April 16th Board of Education meeting. You'll you'll notice we are shifting to a virtual format this evening. While our virtual meeting will be a departure from presenting to you in person, we feel so fortunate to have the technology and capability to conduct our meeting from a safe socially appropriate distance. To that end, we know that there will be glitches or technical issues that present themselves throughout the evening. Our plan is to apply the same grace and patience we've been embodying throughout our virtual learning experience to all our presenters, guests, and ourselves. We'll navigate through any hiccups together. Our board members and administrators will remain muted when they are not speaking in order to contribute to the best sound quality on the stream. We'd also like our audience at home to know that we successfully set up a process to conduct public comments in this format, but we did not receive any requests from the public to speak tonight. Finally, I'd like to offer my sincere and endless gratitude for the hard work and dedication LSR seven administrators and staff have exemplified throughout this pandemic. You have gone above and beyond for our students and our families, and your efforts are noticed and appreciated, not just by this board, but by the entire community. I'd also like to thank our students, parents, families, for your patience, understanding, and hard work to adapt to a new situation. Your efforts truly make LSR seven the strong and special school community that it is. And finally, I want to offer some words of encouragement and praise for our seniors, our class of 2020. We know this is not the end that you wanted for your senior year. This is not the end we wanted for your senior year. And yet you've weathered the experience with grace and courage. You're a remarkable class, and if you carry even a fraction of the resilience that you've demonstrated through this year into your next chapter, then I am certain you will successfully choose, you'll be successful in anything you choose to do. You've made LSR seven proud. And with that, we'll move on to our first item on the agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have an emotion? A motion, please?
I move to adopt the revised agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Great. Thank you. I'm going to be toggling between two computers. So we will move to 2.01, which is superintendent's report. Dr. Miller.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your comments, President Doan. And I've got a couple of comments before we turn it over to the board priorities. As you're aware, Governor Parsons has extended the stay-at-home order through May 3rd. We're also working very closely with our Jackson County Health officials on timelines and guidelines. As you're aware, on March 16th, we made the difficult decision to move into closure over spring break. Every facet of our organization mobilized quickly so that we were prepared to deliver virtual instruction on March 23rd. This was a Herculean effort on behalf of teachers, principals, technology staff, counselors, nutrition services, transportation facilities, and many, many more. Thank you to our parents for your partnership as we navigate uncharted waters together. And to you, our students, we miss you and look forward to when we will see you again. These past few weeks have forced us to be patient, and still it has afforded us an opportunity to build relationships and connections that we would not have known possible before. We know that COVID-19 has impacted and created hardships for many in our school community. Please know it is our intention to stay connected with our students and family, to be a resource as we walk through these challenging times together. In the next few days, we will be working through end-of-year procedures, and please know we plan to keep you communicated and provide you the information that you need every step of the way. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kephart, Kyle Gurrell, and Katie Bergen to give updates on our board priorities. Thank you.
Thank you so much for letting us join you today as we were getting ready for our quarterly update. As an academic service team, we were looking beyond and thinking all the things that happened before our change in COVID-19. So we're excited to share a little bit of updates on board priority one, and then we'll move into two and three. If you would like to go ahead and next, we're trying to work through the switching of the slides. So board priority one, as you well know, is to increase the achievement of every student through a continuation of innovative practices, student achievement, or student wellbeing equity, and program design and development. Next. As we talk today from an instructional highlight in our board priority one, we're going to highlight our equity plan, our NTSS system of support, some professional development opportunities we had in February, data-driven decision-making, our work with real-world learning, as well as social emotional supports and what we're living in now with our virtual connections to instruction. Next. So as always, you get to see some of our wonderful student faces and a few faculty as well. So next, and we'll we'll see them a little bit more. Can you believe that since we last met, we actually had Red Snow Day? So wanted to be able to highlight just a little bit. This happens to be Mason Elementary. But in our equity plan, you had a deep dive into the March update of our equity plan last time when we were together in our board meeting. But we are continuing to focus on that plan, especially now as we start to plan forward for the 2021 school year. As you also know, we have had some changes in professional development just due to our changes in delivery models. So more to come, but those spring dates have been moved and will be rescheduled as soon as we can all be together again. Next. And then we have also celebrated since we have last seen each other for a board update, the 100th day of school. And on the 100th day of school, we wanted to be able to highlight our multi-tier systems of support. We are continuing to move forward as we look at the interaction between academics' behavior, but also the way that we utilize our instructional framework and utilize instruction in the school district. So we are continuing that district alignment. We did have a district-level team in May that we will no longer be seeing in person, but we hope to do that virtually as well. We are looking at an instructional framework to highlight that multi-tier system of support. And then our instructional operation team will provide more to you in alignment with MSIP six in having instruction as as the core tenet of a multi-tiered system of support for Lee Summit School District. So more to come on that in June. Next. And then we have also since February had some very robust professional development. February 28th, we had some robust dyslexia training for all of our elementary teachers. That was training that was done from some of our letter staff. We also have teachers that are continuing their letter training, although that looks a little bit different now. And we have a new cohort joining that letters group next year. We have also had prior to February 28th, we had our parent dyslexia night, which was very well attended. So we were glad to see so many joining us with Kim Stuckey from DESI. During February 28th, we also had some special education training specifically for different areas of special education, and we had some specific training for our administrative assistants. Next. Oh, one less. Perfect. Thank you. As we continue to move forward with data driving our decisions for instruction curriculum and assessment, we are excited to continue to utilize NWEA. While that has changed just a little bit by not having our spring window, it is something that the data we are we are using as we move forward with instruction. We are also, as we had shared before, our panorama survey, the window for our panorama survey closed last week. So we were able to highlight some of that data for our buildings actually today. And we specifically for panorama continued with the survey for students because several of the questions on there, the majority of the questions on there actually will help us as we move into May to see how can we connect with students from a social emotional and aspect of virtual instruction. So we're excited to work with principals to have that specific data in this time that we're in, but then also to see that as some background for building our goals for next year. And then we had some great early preparations for EOC and MAP, but as you well know, those are no longer occurring. So we had planned on having those and we're ready to move forward on that, but wanted to share that we are no longer having those. Next. And then we are also continuing to move forward with our real-world learning and with our work with Kaufman. So Diploma Plus, you will be hearing much more about Diploma Plus as we move forward in our May pitch to Kaufman. And plus meaning what is that one extra thing? We've talked about market value assets. What is that one extra that Lee Summit graduates have in addition to their diploma? And how do we start that early by exploring at an elementary level, igniting those passions at a middle school level, and truly experiencing at a high school level? So this hasn't slowed down that work. We are actually continuing that. And we will be pitching virtually to Kaufman, but excited to be able to share that pitch with you as well. And next. And as you well know, in this time that we are in, our social emotional supports are the largest that we have. We have been focused on connections, and those connections have absolutely been about our social emotional supports. They were before. It was a strength of ours and an area to to continue to grow in before, but has been strengthened even more now. So we appreciate all of our meal connections, our connections through food service and transportation, but also our connections to some of our food banks at our schools. And we appreciate being able to support our families, continuing building supports during this time and before, but probably more so this time too. We have many of our counselors, our ed therapists that are meeting specifically with students, some of them that are meeting with families to be able to support during this time. And they're also planning ahead. We have much of our staff that is working on some professional development. As we come out of virtual learning, what has, what can we continue to support some of the needs of our staff and our students that may have some additional trauma from this experience, but also may need just some additional support once they're back in our schools? We also have some amazing community connections that we are continuing to provide as collecting students' voice through our panorama survey, and then working on that reentry care when we are able to be back together. Next. And then the last that I want to be able to highlight and certainly would not be the end of instruction if I did not highlight virtual learning and all of the work that has gone into our academic service team, as well as everyone else from curriculum specialist department chairs, ITS, and beyond, that has moved forward with virtual learning and that true focus on connecting our students and our staff, making sure that that learning continues, but that learning continues because of that connection. So President Doan talked earlier about that grace and patience. That has been a continued a continued theme for us as well with with principals, with teachers, with students, and with parents. So we are continuing instruction. That is an important part of our May, of our April and our May, I should say. So that is a continued importance, but that connection to our students is of utmost importance to us. So we will continue to support the end of the year through virtual instruction and excited to do so and able to adapt with that as as we are able to. So we appreciate that we have the technology to be able to connect in the ways that we are with our students because just like it's exciting for us to see each other tonight, that's exactly what our teachers and our students see each each time they're able to connect. So we appreciate you hearing more about board priority one. Next. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't come back. I'm sorry. I would be remiss if I didn't come back and highlight portrait of a graduate and our instructional compass. Now, next. And I'm going to send that.
Hey, thank you. I think I think we have a handoff. For board priority two, we're going to talk a little bit about the future-ready learning environments that are currently being planned for the proposed 2020 bond issue. Next slide. The design and construction teams have been maintaining our established project schedules despite our altered working environments. Although we've missed being able to have personal meetings, the virtual meeting environment has presented new opportunities for involvement and collaboration. And I'm really excited tonight to be able to share with you some of the progress that we've been able to make on the middle school project, Lee Summit High School, and Mason Elementary School projects. Next slide. The new middle school is approximately 180,000 square feet, and it'll serve a maximum of 1,206 through eighth grade students. And this image shows a schematic rendering of what the new building will look like. Next. The site plan on the left shows two street entrances on Bailey Road that will provide adequate circulation for buses, parents, and students using the Lee Summit High School baseball softball facility. This baseball softball facility contains varsity fields for baseball and softball, two multipurpose fields, and a fieldhouse building with restrooms, concessions, lockers, and storage. Parking for this campus is located centrally to be shared by both the middle school and the athletic complex. The middle school site has purposely been designed to enhance outdoor learning opportunities for students. In particular, the natural vegetation along the east boundary line serves as a great backdrop for learning. Next. This slide shows the first and second floor schematic design plans. And keep in mind, please, that these plans will change slightly as we work through design development meetings with teachers and administration. The building is designed with three classroom pods to the north, one for sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, with the sixth grade being the furthest to the north. The center of the building where the structure bends is the secure main entry, which brings you into the cafeteria and the media center. The southern end of the building houses student athletics and activities, as well as music and health classrooms. Next. And this image shows a layout of one of the grade-level pods. This two-story area contains the classrooms and instructional support space to accommodate three middle school teams or 12 classrooms, plus the other instructional space. The science area is located on the first floor, as seen in this diagram, with all classrooms being organized around a central stair and a flexible collaboration space. Each learning space will have the ability to adapt to individual needs of both students and staff through flexible furniture and building infrastructure. Next. Moving on to the Lee Summit High School project. This project will accomplish the primary goals of modernizing the facility for future-ready learning, for improving infrastructure, and improving campus circulation. A new central spine will connect A building, the fieldhouse, and B building with new and innovative space. We will also be upgrading building systems such as mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and roofing. Next. The new central spine will house a new library media center, which will be designed to function as a true hub for the building. A new front entry and administrative office suite will be situated along the west elevation. This section of the addition will provide a much-needed welcoming entry for everyone who visits this campus. Three innovation zones will also be situated along the central spine, along with numerous other flexible learning areas throughout the building. Next. Lee Summit High School will be given a new image from the west, south, and partially from the east. This slide shows early renderings of the proposed west and east elevations. An outdoor plaza will pass under the building connector, allowing students the much-needed outdoor experience on good weather days. The outdoor plaza will also serve as a dining and learning area, as well as clear passage to the industrial tech and weights buildings to the north. Next. One of the many design exercises that Gould Evans is working through with staff is how to use the existing corridor space. With the reconfiguration of existing space and likely the removal of lockers, there are many opportunities to create shared small group learning spaces in the corridors. We're trying to reinforce the concept that learning happens everywhere. These concepts are currently being studied through our designs and development process. Okay, next slide. Moving on to Mason Elementary School. The Mason addition and renovation project will modernize the learning environment and improve circulation in the building. Our design team is currently nearing completion of design development. The areas shown on this plan are areas of emphasis for additional learning opportunities outside of the classroom, again, reinforcing the idea that learning happens everywhere. The building addition on the east side will provide eight classrooms, a library media center, and a new office and front entry. Next. These images show the design team's recommendation for the new front entry design. This front porch concept provides a welcoming entry that will have plenty of area to gather undercover. These design elements will also be used on the south elevation at the existing entry, which will serve as the future bus entrance. Next. These next couple of slides, we're going to show some of the some of the interior spaces. This is the new library media center design, which will serve as a central hub in its new location. The open plan will be flexible enough to meet the many needs of the school. It's strategically situated in the middle of three grade-level classroom pods and next to a makerspace and a green room. Next. The new media center is going to provide a fun and engaging space for kids to learn, and we're really excited to see how this space will have a lasting impact on students. Next. These images show the fourth-grade classroom pod and collaboration area. This will be the typical design for space provided at each grade level. Classroom sizes were reduced slightly, allowing for extra flexible space that can be used by all teachers. This space provides a much-needed individualized learning area that our teachers and students greatly need. Each classroom will have flexible wall systems, allowing for ease of use and supervision. Next. Finally, the last project I would like to present today is related to our traffic and turf replacement project. This project is on the board agenda tonight to be considered for approval. Our design team worked through an interview, site visit, and review process that led to a recommendation with ATG Sports Industries for contract award this evening. Our current turf is on our long-range capital plan and is at the end of its life. By placing this project on a proposed bond issue, it can free up capital funding that can be used for many other needed deferred maintenance projects. These images show the layouts being proposed that each of our schools are very excited about. And this is the end of my presentation. I will pass it on to Katie.
Thank you, Kyle.
Okay. Well, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present about board priority three, building confidence and trust in our school district through communications. I really do want to start this presentation, though, however, by acknowledging the immense amount of work that LSR seven staff have done, communication or otherwise, to support students and parents and our families. So while this presentation will focus on the efforts of the Public Relations Department to communicate the efforts of the Public Relations Department to communicate through the pandemic, I I do want to say that every single staff member in LSR seven contributed to building trust and fostering communications through this process by doing everything they could to provide a little sliver of normalcy in whatever way that they that they could. So I wanted to start there. It will be of no surprise to anyone that my presentation will be pretty much solely focused on our COVID-19 communications throughout the spring. I took the time to really study the calendar when I made this presentation, and even though I think sometimes it feels to me like an eternity since we were all together in our school buildings, it really has been 50 days since our first COVID-19 communication and 34 days that we've been out of the buildings. So our communications about COVID-19 really matched the trajectory and the escalation that you saw public public health officials take towards managing the spread of the virus itself. So in February and early March, most of our communication was focused on prevention. And then as we neared spring break, we shared steps LSR seven was preparing to take to keep students and staff safe. And then, as we all know, we quickly transitioned into the deployment of action plans related to school closures throughout March. And as we've entered April, communications have been centered on support, student and staff well-being, providing resources to help our families adapt to their new normal, and following up with additional updates and impacts to our plan. Next slide, please. I'm actually just going to move quickly to the next slide because I'm going to go into each of these objectives in a little more depth. So we can just skip to the next one, if you don't mind. So, given the pandemic and the tremendous impact it had on our district and our families, we felt it was appropriate to singularly focus on providing accurate and reliable information quickly and regularly to our stakeholders. We knew our communication needed to be proactive, it needed to be direct, and it needed to be consistent. It was also critical that we used multiple platforms to communicate these messages. So yes, we continued to utilize email and text messages and voicemails to keep our families informed, but we also built a special website and homepage links to create a one-stop shop for families to access resources and virtual learning FAQs. We posted all of our district communications on a timeline on that page. We provided our FAQs in multiple languages on that page, and we also sent translated materials back to families, to families directly. It's also important to mention that it was really important to us that our internal stakeholders, our staff, were informed and felt up to speed on district steps throughout this process. So there were a lot of important conversations initiated by both the district and our principals to personally follow up on some of our action plans. And when it came to families, I think really some of the more powerful communications came in one-on-one conversations with parents or students. You know, what do you need, and how can I specifically help you with that challenge? And sometimes it was also simple. I'm listening. I hear your concerns. I'm hearing your feedback. Next slide, please. So to expand on the last slide, virtual learning was as much a new learning experience for our district administrators and staff as it was for our parents and our students. We were really writing how-to manuals in the moment and often changing them as we went, as we received direct feedback about how best to support our families during our time out of school buildings. So every district department played an important role in the development of FAQs and action plans for how we as a district were going to provide everything from nutrition and special education services to well-being checks to lessons and a focus on academics. We do know, however, that more communication is not always clear communication. So the Public Relations Department relied on social media graphics, more so than usual, to help visually present some of these changes in a clearer, more digestible way for our families. Next slide, please. So I've already shared with you that our mission was to support families by providing reliable and regular communication with our school family. But I think I'll surprise no one when I say we did not always have immediate answers as we navigated this unprecedented and ever-changing situation. So it was really important that we were open about that with our families and made sure that folks understood that we were sharing what we knew when we knew it, and that we would be very upfront about what we were. and that we would be very upfront about what we were still evaluating. Um, and I really can't think of a better example of that than March 16th, which was, if you recall, the Monday after we first left for spring break. You know, school closures were top of mind for lots of our families, and there was lots of questions about whether we would be returning. And we shared where we were that morning with our families, that, you know, we have not made a decision about whether we are returning after spring break, but we're having important conversations with the health department, and it's definitely an option that we're considering. Well, we know those important conversations actually occurred that afternoon, and by that evening, we were communicating with our families, you know, news of our first school closures. So providing timely communication was an important part of ensuring our community had faith and trust in our school system. And of course, we continued that priority as we navigated other scenarios, whether it was sharing news of a positive COVID case or acknowledging that we knew schulology was a challenge for our families in terms of accessing virtual learning. We acknowledged those challenges. We committed to finding solutions for those challenges, and we made good on our promise to bring those solutions to fruition. Sometimes as school administrators, we know that a challenge we face is the perception that feedback parents or students or staff might give us falls on deaf ears. This district does value feedback from our families, and we demonstrated that by quickly orchestrating changes to our virtual instruction plan that were intended to make the process more effective, to provide some flexibility and relief to our families and staff who we know represent a broad spectrum of experiences and personal challenges throughout this pandemic. Next slide, please. So this next slide, um, is devoted to our, to a priority that guided really every action that the district took in navigating school closures. Our school family and our community truly stepped up in service to students and families. We know it wasn't just about providing learning. It was about providing care and basic needs for our kids as well. An important part of our efforts were, um, making sure that families were aware of and had access to a plethora of resources that were being created to make school closures easier for families. So that looked like communicating distribution sites that Lori Donella and her awesome nutrition services team, um, had quickly initiated to make sure our families had food. That looked like making sure that well-being and mental health resources were on our website. That looked like trying to communicate quickly, as quickly as possible to our staff, uh, payroll and compensation and benefits information so that while we couldn't provide the answers to all of the questions that were circulating that at that time, we could provide some peace of mind about, uh, job security. And it also looked like hundreds and hundreds of personal conversations with families from representatives of every level of the district, um, working to meet families exactly where they, they were, say, okay, what do you need? How can I help you? Next slide, please. So part of trying to find that sliver of normalcy in this scenario is to continue what we already do, which is to elevate stories of student and staff achievement. And certainly, the pandemic provided no shortage of stories about the resilience and innovation of our students and staff. We had our art programs featured on the news, the car parades that some of our elementary sites, um, put on for students to show them some socially distant support. Were featured in the newspaper as well. And of course, we've been generating our own content, um, virtually celebrating our wins, virtually sharing in our challenges. Certainly, there's a sort of news you can use aspect to this. When I sign on to Twitter, for example, what I see often is sort of real-time professional development and members of our school family giving each other tips and advice and encouragement to navigate school closures. It's, uh, it's pretty heartwarming to see, and it's important that these celebrations continue. Next slide, please. So to wrap it up, what's to come? We know we still have important information to share and questions to answer about how we'll manage the end of the school year, the return of belongings, the challenge of holding events with our buildings closed. The district is hard at work at, uh, answering some of those questions and making action plans for our next phase. You know, our school family has persevered through something profoundly difficult, and I think that needs to be celebrated. So you'll see both the district and building leaders lead the way when it comes to finding innovative ways to celebrate our students and our teachers and our retirees, and especially our seniors during this, um, time. As Kyle mentioned, we also have a bond issue on the June 2nd ballot, and the bond issue has, has not been our top priority since we left for spring break. Supporting students and staff and meeting them where they are in our altered school year has been our priority, and that's not really going to change. If the election remains on June 2nd, however, we will need to reintroduce our bond issue to our school community in a way that's appropriate and considerate of, uh, current events. So I think, though, if this experience has reminded our community of anything, it's the critical and multifaceted role that school districts play, um, in service to our students. So whatever our next phase of our campaign will look like, it'll be important to remind the community that this is an opportunity to invest in a school district that cares deeply about students and our families. And then finally, um, in keeping with the message about valuing feedback, families can expect to receive a survey about our virtual instruction experience by the end of this month. And we know this is a process that we will likely have to replicate at some point in the future. So it's an important opportunity for families to help inform and improve our approach. And that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Katie.
I just want to close by just saying, I think the presentation that you heard tonight by Dr. Kephar, Kyle Gurrell, Katie Bergen, I think it's just reflective of, um, district leaders on both the instructional operations team, uh, superintendent's leadership team, the work they're doing behind the scenes to balance both urgent needs that we're addressing through COVID-19, as well as the meaningful, important needs, uh, ongoing for the district. So, uh, very appreciative of their work.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Miller. We will, um, move down to four. We had no public comment, so four will do board reports. And let's go ahead and start with, um, Mr. Allen.
Okay. Four different things to, um, to report on, and I'll try to do those in, um, calendar order. We had a team meeting, a meeting April 7th. Really, we're working through the procedures that, uh, that we, um, that are customary for the team, the team group and the committee itself. Discussions about the employee survey, you know, certainly that went out. Presentations and discussions with a number of people, actually, that, uh, on the administrative team, Dr. Daniel, Dr. Flack, Dr. Hill, Dr. Mathis, um, updates from HR and financial, updates from Dr. Miller. Both President Don and I were at that meeting on April 7th, Zoom meeting. It was, um, approximately noon to four, I think. Done very well. Um, April 14th, uh, the committee for Teacher of the Year, uh, met. There were, uh, 16 people on that Zoom meeting. Non-voting moderator is Laura Maxwell, that did a great job with that, uh, that discussion. Uh, and that actually was, um, was very in-depth. That conversation was between roughly 3:00 and 6:00 PM. So we spent some time on that, um, narrowing 12 excellent and teaching, candidates, certainly, and the three teachers of distinction. Those interviews are going to be, I think, the week of April 27th or the next week in May. I think Laura is wrapping that together. Chamber Education Committee met April 15th. And certainly, good positive comments from the chair of that committee, mentioning and reinforcing just exactly what, what we just heard. At least Summit is progressive, uh, collaborative, and very upfront in this unprecedented timeline or unprecedented timeframe, both with the virtual, virtual learning, learning environment, and then the, the, the strong work by teachers, educators, staff, I mean, from top to bottom. And then, uh, the 15th, Judy Hedrick and I, Dr. Hedrick and I, were at a very brief TIF Commission meeting that essentially, um, provided continu- continuance to June, June 10th. So, it's my report.
Great. Thank you. Kim, Prouchy?
Right. Um, thank you very much. And tonight, uh, I, I normally report on the, um, Lee Summit Chamber of Commerce Government Relations Committee. Obviously, they did not meet this month, uh, for obvious reasons. Lee Summit Educational Foundation, um, I have a short report from them, even though, uh, again, we weren't able to meet in person this month. Uh, the foundation board and committee members are in the process of determining student scholarship recipients and the teacher peak grant recipients. Those recipients will be announced in May. As COVID-19 is creating a financial crisis for our families and our community, one of the foundations committee members, Jeff Hill, is seeking to provide help by hosting a Facebook birthday party with proceeds to benefit the foundation's Helping Hands Fund. Now, the Helping Hands Fund is designed to provide one-time emergency financial assistance for families facing crisis who cannot obtain help through other avenues. We have many families experiencing hardship, so every gift, no matter what the size, will help families in need in our community. There is a link for you to donate if you want to donate to the Helping Hands Fund. And it is, um, a HTTPS colon backslash backslash slash bit, B-I-T dot L-Y backslash 34B X M V O. And if you just need, um, to get that again, you can contact Cheryl Frankie, uh, through the Lee Summit Educational Foundation. All you have to do is go to our website, um, the Lee Summit Educational Foundation there with the school district. Um, and if anyone else would like to host a, uh, special birthday party, anniversary party, or just a get-together benefit to help the Helping Hands Fund, just contact Cheryl Frankie because, uh, she can help put that together, and that will help families in our district during this, uh, difficult time. That's my report. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Kim. Mr. Smith.
I would just like to, uh, really only have one thing, and that will be come up here in just a few moments. And we had, we did have a financial, uh, committee meeting yesterday, and I will have a report for that in a little while. Citizens Advisory Committee has, uh, been kind of placed on hold right now, although they're still active the best we can with the upcoming, hopefully, bond issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hedrick.
Um, I do not have anything to add, um, to the meeting, uh, the TIF meeting that, uh, Mr. Allen talked about earlier, so thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Ms. Clark.
Good evening, everyone. I have, uh, had a fun, fun time with the Highland Park Elementary Parade here through the neighborhood a couple of weeks ago. It's actually closer to over the month ago. And I just really wanted to congratulate the faculty there for coming through the neighborhood. The kids were gathered, uh, probably socially distant appropriately enough, but, uh, you could just tell from their shouts and their excitement that they were very thrilled to have been a part of, of that opportunity. And I think that was their spring break week or right after spring break. So that really made them, uh, really, really happy to see, um, the care and, and the effort and the time that was put forth for them. In addition to, uh, witnessing that parade and greeting them, the Missouri School Board Association has had two legislative meetings that I've sat in on, and they are expressing to all of us, uh, among school board leaders around the state, the really dire situation, uh, we are in. We're very fortunate right now that the governor has not, uh, reduced any funding with withholdings in the current fiscal year. However, the budget for fiscal year 2021, which would begin July 1, is definitely in question, and legislators will have some very difficult decisions to make regarding how they're going to allocate funds when, uh, state revenues have, uh, plummeted quite dramatically in a very short period of time. And I might add to that, um, we are going to have to be mindful as a district of, of what's going on with the state and the sudden and dramatic increase in unemployment, uh, in our state, in our community, food bank lines, um, all, all kinds of things that are going on in our community that are very, very serious. And, and then frankly, uh, to acknowledge, uh, we've got some local folks who are busily working on providing PPE masks, uh, sewing them in their homes. And, um, I've been able to make some connections there with our folks to, um, work with entities that wanted to donate, uh, material for creating those masks. And I just, it, it's really been quite moving to see the care and concern. And I know at least, uh, one effort was undertaken to help, uh, end the, or I should say, reduce or eliminate the, um, lunch balances that were still standing in some of the schools. So, uh, those may be other opportunities for folks to get involved. I know businesses around the country are trying to find ways that are appropriate to be engaged with their communities, and I hope that, uh, some of our businesses and, and our fine citizens will, uh, do the same if they have that opportunity. And, and some of them may need support from us, so hopefully we'll be able to help that in the future. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Murdock.
Just a couple of quick things here, uh, like Jackie, thank you to all of the staff, teachers and stuff like that for their dedication here to trying to get virtual learning off the ground. I know that there's still some things that we're working on, but we sincerely appreciate those efforts, including all of the extras that you're doing, um, in regards to coming through neighborhoods, chalking up kids' driveways, still trying to help doing coaching activities at the middle and secondary levels. So a sincere appreciation to all of our staff for doing that. Um, I did participate in the finance committee meeting, um, yesterday morning that Dennis will be giving a report from. Um, and we certainly could echo those sentiments that there will be some decisions that this board needs to be able to make um, in regards to finances, um, especially over the next 18 to 24 months, where we'll see the bigger impacts coming. So those will be things that we need to be very mindful of as a board. That's, that's all for my report.
Great. Thank you, Ryan. All right. Mike mentioned that we did have a Team Lee Summit meeting. We will, um, get back together on August 10th, a little earlier this year, so wanted to let everyone know that. We'll have an extra meeting next year and, and just probably seems like tomorrow that August will come. So, um, moving on to Lee Summit Cares, we made a very tough decision to cancel Got Talent this year. We took into consideration the school closures and gathering of large audiences, but, oh, no fear, we will be back on June of 2021. Kind of a fun thing that Lee Summit Cares is doing. They're working with all three high schools to adjust the Third Annual Wellness Walk to a virtual event, so the entire community is invited to, and so you can just check them out on Lee Summit Care's Facebook page to get all the information. So still, we can do everything virtually, can't we? All right. We will move down now to 5.01 with the finance report. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I know this is a rather lengthy report tonight, but it is not unusual from what it is this time of the year, even though life is different in, in our school system at this time. Things are going on, as we, as you well know, preparing for, uh, for the next year. And so while I'm going to give you an update, and then we'll have a couple motions, Madam President, at, at the end of this, to, uh, to hopefully approve. Uh, the finance committee did meet yesterday, and, uh, and the transfer of funds, a transfer of $3,350,665.09 is needed from the general fund to the special revenue fund to cover expenses for the month. Investments through March total approximately $144.4 million. The revenue and expense report, expense percentages are within expected budget parameters, and the current fund balance for March is 43.86%. Facilities, there's been several, uh, items here on, on our, for our consideration. ATG Contract Award, turf and track update. Turf and track replacement project is a part of the district's long-range capital plan. The scope of work includes replacing artificial turf and track surfaces at all three high school stadiums. The recommendation is to award a contract to ATG Sports Industries that will include the cost to mill and overlay the asphalt surface, a 10-year warranty coverage, and a 10-year annual maintenance plan. Cook, Flat, and Strobel Contract Award, geotechnical and construction testing services. This contract is to support potential construction- This contract is to support potential construction projects being proposed in the twenty-twenty bond issue. The geotechnical portion of the work is needed by structural engineers to evaluate existing soil conditions to properly design the building structural system. Construction testing is needed for building code compliance and quality control with services being provided on an as-needed basis. Dakin Thermal Mechanics, Inc. is for the Aquatic Center boiler replacement. The Aquatic Center has two hot water boilers which were installed in 2008 and the use and conditions within the Aquatic Center has greatly reduced their lifespan. This is a proposal to replace the two boilers and associated pumps and also includes a heat exchanger to separate pool water from the boiler to increase the life of the new boiler. Dakin Thermal Mechanics, Inc., again, Aquatic Center valves replacement. The Aquatic Center has eight isolation valves for the pool system, including the main drain valve. These existing valves are cast iron and have corroded over time to the point of leakage. This is a proposal to replace these values with light valve, excuse me, to replace these valves with light valves. Dakin Thermal Mechanics, Inc., Bernard Campbell Middle School, cooling towers replacement. Bernard Campbell Middle School has two cooling towers that are twenty-nine years old. Gosh, that's hard to believe. These cooling towers serve the chillers that provide air conditioning for the building. The cooling towers are in poor shape and rate high on our assessment for replacement. This is a proposal to replace the two cooling towers. Dakin Thermal Mechanics, Inc., Westview Elementary Chiller Replacement. Westview Elementary School has one air-cooled chiller that provides chilled air for, chilled water for air conditioning for the building. This chiller is twenty-two years old and it's at the end-of-life conditions. This is a proposal to replace the chiller. Ensco Industries Contract, Aquatic Center Painting. The Aquatic Center paint is original to the building and showing signs of wear and degrading. This scope of work involves repainting the interior of the pool itself. Ensco Industries has a successful history of significant work in the Kansas City region and are well qualified to do this project. Construction and maintenance update. The finance committee reviewed updates on the following projects. Woodland Sewer improvements, Westview Roof Improvements, Districtwide Roof Improvements, Lee Summit West Retaining Wall Improvements and planning for future projects. There were some other things discussed. The Power School Group LLC, Special Education Software System Access. Power School Group LLC is being recommended to provide a centralized location to house individualized educational plans or IEPs. Evaluation reports, Section 504 plans and Section 504 evaluations. They were chosen based on the value for the district, including price, usability, compliance, IEP process, evaluation, parent accessibility and training. Audiovisual Service Presentation Tool Service Agreement. The Technology Department worked with the district purchasing to solicit bids for audiovisual A V presentation tools and installation services. Three vendors stood out as providing the lowest price and greatest value on equipment and installation services. The recommendation is to award the Kansas City Audiovisual Best Buy and Electronic Contracting Company. The district utilizes these audiovisual companies to purchase, install or service such items as TVs, projectors, interactive displays, sound systems, et cetera, for various building needs. Connection Solutions Group Contract. The Technology Department reached out to many providers due to the COVID-19 crisis and the movement to virtual learning in search of additional hotspots to meet the needs of students. Connected Solutions Groups were able to secure fifty refurbished hotspots that could be added to our current Verizon contract. The majority of students still in need of hotspots are elementary level. The goal is for these fifty to fulfill their last remaining student request. Walsworth Yearbook Contract, High School Yearbook Printing Services. The contract for High School Yearbook Printing Services expires this year. Purchasing along with High School Yearbook Advisors Principals created a request for proposals, RFP, for this service. The three different bidders responded to the RFP. After review and evaluation of the three bids that were received, one vendor stood out above the others, overall providing the greatest value for these services. The recommendation is to award our incumbent vendor Walsworth Yearbooks. Aerie Heat Rail Lifting Systems Contract is a bus lift. Currently, nine technicians share two lift systems and transportation. This is not allowing for service, servicing needs of various departments of the district. This often results work getting backlog with which places district's equipment out of service and unable to be used. This additional vehicle lift system will allow more work to be completed and essential repairs to take place in timely and cost-effective manner to keep equipment in service and available for district use. Before and After School Services Program Evaluation. The committee reviewed the Before and After School Service Annual Program Evaluation. Frontline Education Review. This request is renewal for extension of services needed to complete a transition from frontline to education to unified talent management professional learning. The transition, excuse me, the transition will be completed later this spring. Twenty-four hour business cards, district-wide copy and print services. We utilize various copy and print services throughout the district. This year, the contract for copy print services expires. After review and evaluations, the bids that were received, one bidder, vendor stood out as the lowest response bidder. Overall, providing the lowest price and greatest value for these services. Their recommendation is to award to our incumbent copy print service provider twenty-four hour business cards. And lastly, McPherson and Jacobson LLC. The Board of Education will hold an annual board work session retreat in June to engage in professional development opportunities and to define the board priorities for 2020 and 2021 school year. Excuse me, in reviewing several options, comparing prices and services. McPherson and Jacobson LLC has recommended firm to facilitate the June work session retreat. Madam President, I have two, we have two actions that we need to take tonight. First, I will move that the board, five oh, five point oh two, to approve the transition, transfer, excuse me, of three million, three hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and nine cents from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Second?
Are there any questions? Raise your hand. Okay. Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Okay, Mr. Smith?
Action five oh three. Madam President, I move that the board approve the Treasurers Report and Payment of Bills.
Second?
Are there any questions or comments on that? Raise your hand. Ryan?
I just wanted to make one quick comment that might be important for fellow members to know that if you looked through the budget lines and stuff like that on the Treasurers Report, and Wes noted this in the Finance Committee yesterday morning, that there are still funds that we have not received from the state in relation to a couple of different programs. So just know that there still are hopefully some funds that we will be getting from the state. If you have questions about that, feel free to reach out to Wes, but that's just something if you were looking through the actual Treasurers Report.
All right. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Great. Thank you. We will move down to items for decision. Six point zero one through six point zero, or six point one. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I would move to approve the consent agenda items six point zero one through six point one zero as presented.
Second?
Okay. Are there any discussions? Comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay? Thank you. And items for decision? Can I? Get motion?
Madam President, I move for approval of seven point oh one through seven point oh three.
Second?
Should that reflect seven point zero two and seven point zero three? Is, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay? Okay, thank you. And items for decision. Approved new contracts over five thousand, eight point zero one. Can I get a motion on that, please?
I move to approve the new contracts over five thousand as presented in items eight point zero two to eight point one six.
Second?
Thank you. Are there, is there any discussion? Okay, Jackie?
I just want people to understand that some of these items are needed for repairs or for academic reasons. And again, trying to underscore for our audience remotely tonight that I think someone's already mentioned, I think Dennis did, in the finance report. And just as a way of reminder, we are, we are doing things that we need to do fiscally this evening and we're not just spending in the middle of a pandemic where we really have some uncertainties in the budget going forward. So I just want to share that and remind folks.
All right. Any, oh, Ryan, sorry.
Oh, it's all good. Eight point one five, the Special Education Software System. You guys may have seen a question asked in the packet about that. And I do think that it's an important program that we're going to be doing so that we can merge our systems together for all of our special education kids, parents and stuff like that, which should make it easier for parents to be able to access their students' IEP and 504, which I think, and we highlighted it in the last board meeting, can sometimes get very confusing in terms of making sure we're following the process, that parents are up to date and are understanding what's actually going on. So I'm excited about that of being able to merge those things together.
I like it when you're excited. All right, any other comments? See, I'm way over here and you can't. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay? Okay, thank you. We are moving down to items for decision. Nine point zero one.
Yes, and just nine point zero one, again, after reviewing staffing, this is a non-allocated request for a point two FTE instrumental music teacher. And we'd be happy to entertain any questions, one appropriate.
Thank you. Can I get a motion first?
I move that the board approve point two FTE to the instrumental music program as presented.
Second?
Great. Does anybody have any discussion or comments to Dr. Miller? All right, seeing, oh, Ryan, you are like at the top of my.
And just so you know, I am clicking raise hand too, but you know, hey, it is what it is. Dr. Miller, hey, do we have other activities that would be coming up in the next year or so that we would need to be looking at FTEs and the art programs and other extracurricular types of classes?
All right, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question, Ryan?
Sure, sure. So while we're approving this because we know that there's a need for students that want to get into the different musics, the different music classes across the district, are there other programs that we're looking at that may need an increase in staffing in like, in other fine arts or other, or other programs like that?
And I'll give a quick overview and I'll invite Dr. Andrews into the discussion as well. I think reviewing staffing is something that we do in an ongoing process. We typically do it one time a year during our non-allocated process. But again, you know, we will look again this spring as we're projecting heading into the fall. And again, just understanding what happens with student enrollment. As far as specific programming, we know with the potential for, you know, middle school number four coming down the road in a couple of years, you know, we'll be looking closely at that as well. So. Dr. Andrews, do you have anything else in addition you'd like to offer?
I think the only is, our first attempt as we look at scheduling bubbles or something is to see if there are any staff to move, change around, cover those and be as efficient as we can. We worked on that for a while when we didn't request the music and just couldn't quite get them all covered, thus coming back. We do have some other bubble areas. Middle school art is one of those. But right now, we believe we're going to be able to cover for next year by traveling some teachers between the middle schools a little bit more and balancing out that section. But it's going to be a tight one and I would very much suspect us having to add in that program next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Andrews. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Or say nay? Okay. Moving down to nine point zero two.
And last month, the board approved compensation for staff throughout the closure. And again, this is a similar recommendation for one eighty-two contracted employees or those that are on comp summaries with the inclement weather. Our targeted end date was May twenty-eighth. Administration's recommending that we compensate employees through that time. Also noted in that write-up is that we're recommending that virtual instruction end on May twenty-second. That gives staff a couple of days following Memorial Day. Whether, we still need to define this, whether that be close grades or, you know, close out their classrooms. So that would be administration's recommendation at this time.
Can I get a motion, please?
I move for the approval of the staff compensation as presented.
Second? Okay. Any questions or comments? All right, Julie?
Jackie has a hand up.
No, I had my hand up too, but that's okay.
Yeah, I said you did, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. I saw yours up too. I will lower my hand right now. So the purpose of this comment is first to echo that we really do appreciate everything that our staff has done in this breach and we appreciate that very much. It's great that we're forward-looking and tying up the details of the end of the school year. The one thing that, you know, people are commenting about is their interest and concern for knowing how the kids are going to end their year. And, and especially this wonderful class of 2020. So I hope that as a board that we're going to be hearing from our administrators very quickly about what direction we may be taking. We know timing is an issue that we've got kids going to boot camp, and I shouldn't say kids, young Americans doing that very soon into June. So I want to just impress upon the board and administration that while we're doing all of these kinds of things tonight on our agenda, that we've got some things that are out there hanging around that families have questions around. And we know that we can't predict when some of the stay-at-home orders will be lifted, but we need to start signaling to folks about what we're thinking, what our thinking might be. So with that, that's all I have.
Board member Clark, we are in active discussions with all of our administrative teams and really problem-solving on the best way to honor students moving forward and really what's the most. and really what's the most clear way for year-end procedures. So we know that there's a sense of urgency for parents to get communication. We also want it to be thoughtful and accurate to our best of our abilities. So please know we're trying to balance that.
Great, thank you. Mike?
Yeah, just, I guess I'm going to be pounding on the same drum because I had that question quite a bit from families, educators, even some of the young adults, just how that's going to wrap up. So, Dr. Miller, I appreciate your comments. I know it's a discussion. But the seven of us don't necessarily run in the same circles. And I think we're all hearing from our friends, relatives, constituents of that, of that issue. So thanks for having that foresight.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Dr. Miller, I think you've answered my question. Only, only questions I've really had from some people is where we are. And I think you've answered, it's an ongoing thing, is, is summer school. And how, if it's even going to happen or, you know, i- i- is there a discussion going on, which I know there is? So, but I, that's, that's going to be upon us real quick also, so.
Yes, and that's, that's actually an item for information that Dr. Caphart will speak to on 1001. So yes, there's some active planning going on. But again, we're, we're dealing with shifting sand, right? And so we're working with different scenarios for summer school. So that's why it's an item for information that will keep the board updated. You'll see that she's included in her board's submittal sheet when we hope to have more information to the board by.
Ryan?
My question is in relation to the end of virtual learning, Dr. Miller, that you just mentioned in terms of May 22nd. I just wanted to raise one quick concern that if stay-at-home orders are getting lifted and right now Mayor Lucas is, is the longest standing one to May 15th, I just want to make sure that we're not imposing an extra stress on parents who all of a sudden are going to be asked to go back to work on the very last week, that we're also going to be asking students to finish virtual instruction and try to close out the year. It's just something that I think we need to be thinking through, that finding the appropriate childcare as you try to go back to work and then also asking those kids to take whatever they need to finish virtual instruction could be pretty difficult. So just something to think about here as we're also messaging the end-of-year procedures.
Sure, points understood. Thank you.
Judy?
I, I would like to have some additional information also at that, when the time is right. In terms of how the state will, will be counting attendance for this year and what impact that will have. And some of these decisions about when we're, when the last day of school is, how that's going to impact our attendance and payment from state aid for then the next year. So I, I think that's kind of, there's a lot of, you know, associated questions about all, as we would typically, you know, wrap up the end of the school year. So I don't need any comment back right now, but I, I do think that's important for us also to have that and be able to share that information. And if some of that is part of our rationale, we need to be able to provide that to our school community.
Okay, and Desi has provided some guidance, so we will include that in our Friday update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed say nay? Okay, thank you. Moving to 9.03. Approval of staff leave procedures. Dr. Miller?
Yes, so similar to what the board took action on previously, administration is recommending that the board extends time during which the employees will not be charged for leave until June 1. And I think that's consistent with what we've done proceeding in the closure. We want to maintain that, that, so that way it provides for a level of consistency across all employee groups. At this time, I'll open it up for questions.
Can I get a motion, please, first?
I move to, I moved that the board approved the recommendation that employees not be charged for leave until June 1st as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right, Judy?
I have a concern about this. I had a concern about our previous action and I am not supportive of extending this leave, not charging leave through any longer than actually April 24th. Because we, we've got some real differences between people who are working right now and people who are not working. And we also have now a domino effect because it affects other policies. The short-term medical leave policy we previously approved, which this in effect would extend the number of days someone could be on short-term medical leave. It also affects FMLA leave, workers' comp. And what it's going to end up doing is costing the district more money because we're extending leaves out for a longer period of time. So I am not supportive of doing that.
Okay. Dr. Del Sam or Sarah McMillan, are you, are you available to step on and talk through some of the guidance we received from Solinda?
I understand the guidance from Solinda was in terms of all, as leave was not going to be charged, that applied to all leave types. But if we start charging people leave, then that would apply to all leave types. So that's where I don't, I don't think there's, I mean, they can certainly, maybe I'm wrong on that, but I would, would say I'm not in supporting of extending leave past the April 24th date.
Okay. Dr. Del Sam or Sarah, do you have any comments that you would like to add at this point?
Good evening, everyone. I think we could certainly provide Dr. Hedrick an additional response in the Friday update. But I think Dr. Hedrick's clear in what she's speaking to. Solinda did provide that delineation for us. The board has agreed to the leave. The board's agreed to paying all employees. And so I, I think, given the guidelines we've been presented, the board's operating as such, Mr. Hatley may want to weigh in as well.
Now I've been unmuted, okay. Yeah, I think my understanding on this is that it's motivated as much by practical concerns as anything else, just the extreme difficulty of, you know, when, when people are not physically present anyway, being able to account for leave. And then, of course, we also have an issue as a public employer that, for instance, and I know when this came into place, there was some concern about paid leave and the effect of some of the federal legislation, which doesn't apply to public employers. So I, I think this is probably motivated as much by practical concerns as anything else. And just in a real inability to track and to know when someone, you know, has, has an issue for leave. When, when as a practical matter, some people are not coming in at all. Some may be working two to three hours a day. And then tracking all that, I, I think the practical problems with that are motivating this as much as anything else. And, and Dr. Del Sam may be able to speak to that more, more fully, but I think that's, that's partly what's motivating this.
I think that certainly is a portion of it, Mr. Hatley. And those were discussions we had in SLT along with our business services department and with Solinda as well.
Kim?
Okay, I guess I'd just like some clarification from Judy as to why are you saying April 24th versus June 1st? What, what, what's your reasoning for that?
Because that was our original date.
Yeah.
And that was the original date we have, the board approved. Not charged leave through was that day. So that's why I'm saying I'm using that date. I, I don't think we should extend it anymore because it does have an impact on these other policies. That in effect, you know, you would be continuing, for example, short-term medical leave for another up to maybe like 45 days. So you could in effect have somebody get almost a year's worth of short-term medical leave. And, and that, when someone's on short-term medical leave, the district's not only paying that salary and benefits 100%, they're also paying for a substitute for that person for, you know, it could be as long as that, that period of time. So I, and, and I think the thing is, when we first started talking about this, there was not really conversation about how not charging leave would in fact impact these other policies that we have. And so I, I'm concerned about extending that, just in terms of the additional cost for the district. If that, if that makes sense.
Yes, and, and I was actually the one who raised the questions that were in the board packet regarding this particular policy too. Because that kind of concerned me, particularly if you've got someone on a short-term disability who's scheduled to go off of that disability or if it's a person who can, who can now work virtually versus couldn't work physically in a classroom and, or are you having to pay a substitute for this person? So those were all of my questions that, that involved this particular question.
Can people hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think also, the April 24th date was, if memory serves me correctly, the original expiration of the first stay-at-home orders. And now with the governor closing schools for the rest of the year, I think the logic behind the first extension or the first suspension of leave follows naturally to the second period up through June 1. Because you're, you're going to have some people who, yeah, they may be, they may still be dis, you know, have a disability or, or something that would normally keep them out. But if the schools are closed anyway and are not going to come to school anyway, how are we going to know in some cases whether in fact they would be able to report to duty when we're not asking them to do that anyway? I think those are the practical issues that have underlay a lot of these suspensions of leave.
Kim?
Isn't that controlled by notes and, and verification? And that's my first question. And then my second one would be, why are we extending all the way out to June 1 when our school, when we're saying our school calendar in essence is going to be ending on May 22nd?
You know, we talked about the May 22nd versus June 1 date. My understanding is that from the business office, they were going to, they were going to end up with maybe two or three different dates, depending on the class of employee. And just for ease of administration, fixing a single uniform date up to June 1 was, was what was motivating that date being chosen. It was simply going to be really difficult for them to have to apply different dates for different classes of employees, depending upon when some people finish their work and when some don't.
Well, this doesn't really eliminate that to 100% either because we do have employees who work 244 days, which would be after, they would be scheduled to end after June 1.
You're right, it doesn't eliminate it, but what we were told, it, it did make it a lot easier. Obviously, we have the 244-day employees we're still going to have to deal with. But they're presumed, a lot of them are, I would say, more actively on duty anyway now. The problem with a lot of employees is, you know, we're not, they're not, you know, that some of them are and some of them aren't necessarily working full day. Some may not be working at all because of the closures.
And that's what went into a lot of the discussions that we did have. Team, I was part of those, that the transition to telecommuting happened so quickly. We knew that there would be some staff that would not have enough work to do from home to fulfill their hours, but they would be receiving 100% of pay. So then charging someone leave, you know, we just kind of grappled with that. But that was part of the discussion to the no use of leave.
I don't know who can answer this question, but what's been our experience during this last month or so? And do we have requests in, and what might our exposure look like?
We do have an internal tracking document. And I believe, Dr. Del Sam, were you able, we had a brief conversation prior to the meeting. If we don't have that information available tonight, we're, we're happy to get that to you. Dr. Del Sam, do you happen to have that by chance?
Yes, I worked with the business services office a little bit. I looked at the data myself. I don't feel like it's solid enough to report this evening. And a portion of that data, if you think about it, back to Mr. Hatley's comment on just the practicality of it right now. When you think about even FMLA leave, you know, our general doctors aren't even receiving our employees or, or anyone right now unless it's high risk or need. So those, those requests aren't in the data currently. So if we'd compare now to last year, it would be very different. Our professional development leave requests aren't the same now as to last year when staff would be out because there's no travel right now for things like that. So it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison, certainly. But there are some requests, jury duty, it's not being requested right now. So it's very hard to put those comparisons in. Even bereavement isn't the same because unfortunately, those types of requests are even more limited right now, sadly. We'd be happy to keep working through that data to get you some semblance of a comparison for you.
Also, that, I appreciate that. And if I, if I could, I, I don't know if it would, would help Dr. Hedrick with the consideration. Because part of our rationale with the previous approval was through the stated date of April 24th with the essentially shelter-in-place, shelter-at-home order from the governor. We know as of today that that, and I think someone mentioned it earlier, it is now extended to May 15th, pretty much here on a regional basis as opposed to the state. If we were to extend this to the 15th, that would get us to the next board meeting and it might give staff the opportunity to give us some other information to consider for those final two weeks. Because I'm not sure it's, and, and Joe might have thoughts, that it would be very consistent policy-wise for us to take the, the initial action that we've taken and then be inconsistent and, and not further extend. But I, I leave that to people that address these issues much more intimately than I would.
And that may be, that may be a, a good question for, for Sarah because, you know, her office is the one that has to administer this. And, and then some of these, some of these regulations, I have to double-check on FMLA, but I know sometimes that you, you're, especially with school employees, if, if school's not in or school's not in session. you're, especially with school employees, if school's not in or school's not in session, sometimes those days don't count. So you end up with, again, just this patchwork of, are you counting the day or are you not? And I think it's the business office. You know, they've got a lot going on, and their work has not cut down. And to ask them to go in there and have to do that on that kind of a basis and assess whether someone would have been working anyway or not, I think was part of the issue here. Maybe Sarah can address that.
Certainly. And to add a little bit to that, with the passing of the CARES Act, with emergency paid sick leave and then emergency FMLA, those are required paid leaves that the district would have to be paying staff for emergency paid leave. If they had any COVID symptoms, they had COVID, they're caring for a family member that has COVID, we would have to pay them eighty hours of leave pay. And then with the emergency FMLA, if an employee is unable to secure childcare or school is closed, we have to pay, I think it's up to six weeks of paid leave as well. So in thinking through that, we would have individuals that would be receiving pay from the district at a hundred percent under those laws there. In regards to tracking, we are continuing to process short-term medical leave claims. So when we know when an employee would be able to return to work, we're tracking work comp leave. We do have just a couple of employees there. So maintaining and tracking is something we are still doing in regards to that.
Is there any other discussion?
President Doan, I guess my question to Dr. Hedrick and maybe Jackie too, since you kind of raised a different date, are, I understand, Dr. Hedrick, if you're against this, but Board Member Clark, are you suggesting we should try to amend the motion, or should we try to stay consistent with the June first date?
I'm comfortable either way. I was trying to find some common ground, if that would have kind of mitigated some of the initial concerns here.
And Sarah, Sarah, I know you guys have had all of these discussions, and obviously, Dr. Delsom, you have too. I mean, as a group, for your business office, June first, is that the easiest date for you?
I think that, and I wasn't involved with all of the discussion, I think June first is more an easier date to manage, absolutely. With the school year ending on May twenty-second, there was talk around some employees would still be receiving pay for those days beyond May twenty-second, when they may not have any work to do or anything to wrap up. So those folks maybe really wouldn't be working, but if we had a non-school-year person that needed a half-day off to care for their child, they would have to take a day off, but somebody else is getting paid. So those are some of the discussions we had around that. June first is more of a clear line in the sand, if you want to say, and would be easier to manage. And I'll let Dr. Delsom add to that if she'd like.
No, those are all the similar conversations. Mr. Metz may want to join in to this as well, involved with those conversations too. The school year would be recommended to wrap up on the twenty-second. Teacher contracts would, with our snow days, would go until the twenty-eighth. We would work with the business office, and I think trying to determine June first is that demarcation.
This, Joe, there's, I was just looking at the calendar. It looks like, unless it's, I've got the wrong date in my calendar, that the board meeting in May is May twenty-one. So if we go to May fifteen, we're going to end up with about four days there with no clarity as to what we're doing.
Right.
And the first is ten days later, basically.
Right.
Twelve, fourteen, thirteen, whatever, but yeah.
I think for me, to my fellow board members, is our teachers and staff, who are also many of them parents within our community, are in an incredible balancing act right now. And if providing a little extra benefit, and I truly respect Dr. Hedrick's comment that this might cost the district a little more, and it might, but if providing that balance to our staff and parents within the community is going to be helpful as we enter into the summer and alleviating even just a little bit of that stress, then I would consider that this policy is worth it.
Ryan, Mike here. I don't disagree with that at all, as far as the dollar amount. I think Judy's, Dr. Hedrick's concern is the consistency with other policies as much as anything else. So does that ripple effect cause difficulty or incongruency, if that's a term, with other aspects of what we've got to consider? So dollar amount is probably very insignificant in the big picture. It's what may impact the other. And I can't speak for Dr. Hedrick, but I just throw that out there, because that sure seemed to be part of your longer statement.
And I know that it, I understand it'll have a ripple effect, but with the amount of legislation that has been passed within the federal government and things that are having to adapt to those particular requirements as well, us extending the leave policy while having a ripple effect. And I did look at the majority of our policies here. I don't think that it actually contradicts any of our policies. And I think that's where we would get into a troublesome aspect, is if it truly contradicted something. I get that there may be some discrepancies and stuff like that, but I think that we're perfectly okay to extend this leave.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Thank you.
We will move on to nine point zero four. The turf and track replacement.
Yes, thank you, President Doan. And really, we wanted to bring this forward just to offer some discussion regarding the timing of the track and turf replacement. As Kyle Garrell mentioned previously in his presentation, you know, this was track and turf for both at the end of life in our three high schools. And it was a priority for our long-range capital plan. They were also noted in our bond package that, you know, will be voted on in June. And if successful, if the bond passes, that's something that could be recoded, as Mr. Garrell noted, so that it would free up capital dollars to do smaller projects across the district. I think it might be helpful just to spend a minute or two and maybe have Mr. Garrell walk through at least what his process was. I think they went through a thorough RFP and then have Mr. Metz clarify what dollars can be spent where. How do we use operational dollars? How do we use capital dollars? How do we use our debt service funds? So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Garrell to really just kind of talk through process.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our process started by assembling a team that would be reviewing and making recommendations. That team consisted of myself, Ken Anderson, who's our Assistant Director for Design and Construction, our three athletic directors, Rich Bichard, and our ground supervisor and our turf manager. And so we started our process by meeting to have just kind of a general review of turf products. We decided on six companies that are the major players in the industry that we invited to have personal interviews with. Those interviews were on February twenty-sixth. And through that interview process, we narrowed down the group to four firms that we felt comfortable with further investigating their products. There were two dates that we selected, March second and March sixth, where the entire team visited sites for each one of those four vendors. Some new, some old installations, but really got a feel for the quality of the products. We talked to people who were the facilities personnel or athletic personnel for each one of the properties and learned a lot about them individually. So after that, Gould Evans worked up an RFP that had detailed specifications of both the products and how the installation would happen. That RFP was issued on March sixteenth. We received pricing and product information from the vendors on March twenty-third. Our team then reconvened on March twenty-seventh. This was the only meeting that we had virtually. If you're counting the days, the other dates were all before stay-at-home orders went into effect. So on March twenty-seventh, we held a virtual teleconference. We discussed all the options, weighed the different factors that are at play, from the quality of the products, the the company's experience, the ability to to be able to maintain a warranty. And of course, the most important is the safety factors involved. And so all those factors together, along with the price, led us to a recommendation with ATG. So the, even though we did issue an RFP and we went through a formal process, we are going to use their cooperative purchasing agreements, which all the turf companies are a part of, to enter into our form of contract with them. So that summarizes our process. Dr. Mueller, unless you have something else you'd like me to cover, I'll let you talk about the capital and operating side of that question.
Thank you. Mr. Metz, do you want to talk through funds and how we can use them in our district?
Okay, okay. So even in these trying times that we're in, we're still going to have general maintenance projects that we're going to have to continue to do over the next three or four years. And this is one of the items that has come up as it's time to do it. You know, we're going to have roofs that we're going to have to have replaced, parking lots, those kind of things over the next two or three years, even though we're having trying times. We have a capital long-term facilities plan. We need to try to stick to that as well as we can. Hopefully, if the bond passes, a lot of that stuff can be passed through the bond, and we'll come out of the general fund, which if the bond passes, we won't have to do a transfer out of the general fund into the capital fund to do a lot of these capital projects. So that's where we're at right now. If the bond does pass, we won't have to do transfers out of operating in the capital to do these projects. I hope that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, President Doan.
All right, we will need a motion first before questions. Can I get a motion, please?
Okay, I move that the board award the ATG Sports Industries for the turf and track replacement project for the amount of two million, two hundred thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five, as detailed in the attachment.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a second. So Judy, do you have a question?
I do have a question. My main question probably will go to Kyle on this. Is it imperative that we approve this at this point versus waiting until after the June bond election? Because my main concern is us approving this prior to the bond election and being able to explain and articulate that to our community and not have that be a negative impact on the bond election. That's really, and if it's a timing thing, because, you know, we should have had the election by now. And I understand that that could be part of it, but I think if that is a major part of this recommendation being brought to the board now, that we need to really do a good job and explain that. So that's really my question. Is it imperative to the timing that we do, we act on this tonight?
The simple answer is yes. To get this work done before August, so that we don't interfere with the beginning of fall sports, we do need to award contracts either at this meeting. We could wait till May, but there's no way to get the project done and wait until after the bond election in June and get the work done this summer.
Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
And to build on what Dr. Hedrick's asking, first of all, we don't know that there's going to be any seasons this fall. That's one of the issues that we're all facing with uncertainty. But the next is, are we truly at the end of life of those fields? And I'm asking that because our election has been pushed once. I was hearing some things today that suggest it may get pushed to August. And I am very concerned, and I'm glad that we're having this conversation tonight, that it is in the package and a person could legitimately ask us, why are we not working on the security pieces of the bond package before the athletic piece? And this is in no way, I hope all my colleagues know, I love to be a spectator of sports. And I want our kids to be engaged in all varieties, including sports for extracurricular activities. But I think parents may ask that question, why this first? And, I mean, they all have to be, it's all a timing issue. And any of those decisions would be prior to the now June second election.
The quick answer to that is that we are actively working on the security projects also. We've slated five schools to begin work this summer on cameras and access control. We're actively planning our keying project, and so that work is going to move forward also.
And then is there any kind of an exit clause, or how quickly are we having to execute this particular contract? What's the date that they're proposing to begin work?
We are hoping to have a pre-construction meeting Monday and to get started next week, frankly. Yeah. So it was going to happen quickly.
Oh, it's me again. I think we need to be very careful in terms of committing resources, especially now that you've indicated also that we have some safety and security. And I assume some of that would have been also, or is, items that would be in this bond election that's upcoming. And if there were potentially something that it does get pushed again, or, you know, whatever might happen between now and then, I am concerned about us committing resources, albeit they are capital resources, but some of them may have to come from our operating fund if we, if we're not successful in this bond issue. So I think we have to kind of tread very carefully. And again, I'm concerned about being able to communicate in a way that everyone understands why we're doing some of these things about the election. I don't want it to be negative on the election.
Yeah, and we are underspending our allocated capital funding for the summer so that in case the bond issue did not pass, that there were some capital resources that could accommodate that.
Well, again, I think due to the economic issues we're going to be facing, we may not be able to do everything that we thought we were going to out of the capital projects. So I think we just need to be careful about how we plan and what our contingencies are.
Okay, we're going to go to Mike and then Kim. You're muted, Mike. Mike, you're muted.
Sorry, that's the best way.
I loved it, but I had to tell you that.
These fields are used more for more than just soccer, football, track, blah, blah, blah. What's our return on investment here? I mean, truly, it's a large dollar amount. They're used throughout. We know what the cost is going in. What does our revenue stream, you know, coming back to us? And if it's flat zero, then it's zero. Second, does this turf and track have one more year of life, one more school year? And I'm not I don't know that we're going to miss football in this fall and hopefully not, I'll go crazy, but you know, you walk on that now, you feel like you're walking on you know, plush heaven's floor for goodness sake. So I don't know if pushing it to twenty twenty one is forever costly, especially when two point X million dollars can go into a lot of buildings across this district. Not the least of which would be Mason Elementary or Greenwood Elementary or Lee Summon Elementary. That would be strong dollar spent for a lot of kids. So.
So Kyle, do you want to talk through?
An ROI there. What's that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're good.
Kyle, do you, do you want to talk through the implications if we did not move forward with this decision tonight?
You know, it turf is not like a piece of a mechanical equipment. It's not like air conditioning that you're going to have catastrophic failure. The the turf and tracks are if you were to to walk across the the fields right now, the turf is all laid down, it will not stand up anymore. It's visually black when you walk across it, so there's a lot of heat generated. There's a lot of splash and and crumb rubber that flies up when it's used. The surface of the of the fibers is frayed. And it just won't stand up. And so I I can't tell you that it couldn't wait a year. Everything can, you know, you can put up with a lot in life. But it's definitely at at end of life and we've gotten our use out of it. And as far as return on investment, you know, turf is something that I try not to put a financial value to. It's more of a value, an educational value for the use, as you mentioned, Mike. The the number of people that can use the field now is is just vast from especially at Lee Summon High, because it's so close, the sped classes go out there and Rotzi uses it. Band and dance and cheer and the whole, the whole gamut. So it's, it's a really valuable piece of infrastructure for for the campuses that we have. Anyway, I hope that that explains at least the value of it.
We we do feel like we got a a good bid on on the work that came in. But I hear clearly from the board the concern about getting out in front of this prior to the bond and we we don't want to do anything. One that would you know, cause cause any kind of concerns with trust with the community. That's not the intent. Really, we were just, again, with the election getting pushed back to June. It really is impacting timeline and really this was a project that we were hoping to have done before the start of school. We understand the concerns. And happy to take any other questions or comments that you have at this point.
Kim was going to talk.
Thank you. Yeah, I I think I was going to bring up what Mike brought up about end of life. I don't, I didn't think we had answered that that question, but then Kyle did. But along with his answer raised the question in my mind as it always does, safety, safety concerns. What are the safety concerns that we might have as the turf and the tracks both reach their end of life? That's my first, that's my first question. And then again, my concern that Emily just reflected in saying that if we proceed on this before we have a firm commitment in an endorsement by our community on our bond issue, that would concern me. So I'm really torn on this issue. But I really would like to hear about the safety concern.
Yes, thank you, Kim.
So I I talked earlier a little bit about G max ratings and typically a field will become harder, will become more compacted the longer, longer it sits. And so our field has has been groomed every year and and been maintained. And what we found is it kept getting harder. We did have to add, because the fibers lay down. We did have to add more infill just to try to get it to stand up and and meet G max ratings. And so our field right now has a very good G max. Because it has so much rubber in it that's been added. The safety issue that can, we have, there's kind of a sweet spot. You don't want too high of a G max because you can have impact injuries. But you also don't want too low of an of a G max, too soft of a field. Because what they find is that athletes can have lower extremity injuries. Their their ankles, their feet now stick to the field too much. And they end up getting ACLs. You know, they tear ligaments and have injuries in a different way. So anyway, we've just been trying to manage it over the last year or two to try to stay in that in that middle zone.
So, okay, one other question. In terms of what would be the typical annual maintenance costs on the field? From some of the work of the things that you just mentioned that need to happen?
We, I could get that too, Judy. I actually have a detailed spreadsheet where we broke out all of the maintenance costs for grass turf versus artificial turf. I can tell you, looking at the contract we're awarding tonight, I believe it was fourteen hundred dollars a year for ATG's contract to come and do the deep timing and recondition the field every year. That's probably about similar to what we we spent previously. Now, our guys during football season, they go out and groom the fields. They just pick up. They run magnets and screens over it and pick up debris. So there's some maintenance costs there too.
So and that would be fourteen hundred dollars per field?
No, that was for all three.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Ryan.
Kyle, I know some of the other board members have spoken to the fact of whether or not the fields could actually be pushed out another year. Even if we did push them out another year, then we still would need to replace them next year, right?
That's correct. And also remember that construction cost escalation is real, you know, and we're going to spend two, three, four percent more to wait a year to do this work.
You you beat, you beat me to it. So see?
Yeah, okay.
No, I was, I was just going to say to everybody, you know, when a field reaches its end of life, if if we postpone this decision, I think we'd actually end up with spending more next year when the fields are even in worse shape. And we need to remember the track resurfacing is a big part of this as well. That's, that's hundreds upon hundreds of athletes that it impacts and I do, and I am sensitive to what you all are saying in terms of the optics that this presents to the community. And I think that that's a real concern, but I think the flip side is, is that this benefits so many kids. And if our true objective is to benefit kids in making this decision and when they return to school for the first time in six months, this is a big project for all of these buildings to get to use upon returning to school. And I I I I respect that it is a lot of money. And clearly, we hope the bond passes to 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 help this out, but this is a needed project, I think, in my opinion. And I agree with you, Kim. I was kind of on the fence on this one with it, but just the sheer number of kids that this is going to help and staff members for that matter, too. You know, in in terms of moving these projects forward and knowing that we'd have to do it next year, and most likely a higher cost, I think that it that it's worth it this year.
And I just want to ditto the safety that concerns because that is my biggest fear. So are there any other discussion? Is there any discussion? Jackie?
Thank you. I respectfully disagree with your observation, Ryan, about the cost of construction. As the person on the board who is in the construction materials industry, I can assure you costs are going down right now in the middle of this pandemic. And it will have a long term recovery process that these costs are not going to go down. In fact, corporations are renegotiating every contract they can right now from cell phone usage to to building and building materials. So I completely get the safety issue. It sounds like to me we could spend fourteen hundred dollars and maybe even two thousand dollars. Make make it twenty eight hundred dollars and and refurb the the turf and track for the year. You're spending more than what you normally do. Get it out a year and show the voters that we have a bond package that's complete and that we are not jumping ahead of the will of the voters. And I will remind folks that we had seen some, I'm sorry to say it. I understand that many, many of our students benefit from the various activities that take place on those grounds, but some people are saying, why does my child have to stand in water in a bathroom at Lee Summon High School? And why are we making this expenditure tonight? In the middle of a global pandemic and with a lack of certainty about any financial streams for taxation. So I I'm, I'm sorry, I I really can't see a need to execute on this contract tonight.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
President Dun, can you verify the nays for me? I I could hear two, but I wasn't sure if there were three.
I thought there was just Mike and Jackie.
And.
Oh, sorry, Dennis. Okay.
So Mike, Jackie and Dennis got?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, Dennis. Yours. You have such a soft voice. All right, let's move down to nine point zero five with McPherson and Jacobson.
Yes, so McPherson and Jacobson, they're the firm that conducted the superintendent search. And through that process, they got well acquainted with the school district, members of the Board of Education. It was a recommendation that McPherson and Jacobson do participate and facilitate the summer board retreat with the Board of Education and with Dr. Buck.
Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion, please, before our discussion?
I move to approve the memo of understanding with McPherson and Jacobson LLC for the board retreat scheduled for June nineteenth to twentieth, twenty twenty, in the amount of five thousand dollars plus actual travel expenses.
All right, we have a second. So any discussion? Ryan?
Dr. Miller, was, is there any possibility, and I mean, obviously, I I like McPherson and Jacobson, but is there any discussion or possibility of Dr. Buck and, for example, you leading a summer retreat for the board? That would allow us to not do this particular expense?
I I spoke to Dr. Buck today and, you know, he's supportive of whatever the the board wishes. And and yes, I'm I'm sure that we could work through an agenda to help support the board in that transition.
Judy?
Well, the rest of the board can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think one of the things that I recall from our conversations as we were going through the search with this group was that they, one of the things that they would help us with is the development of a very robust superintendent evaluation instrument. Which I think several of us from, if I recall correctly, we struggled with previously. And I think our goal as a board is to come up with an evaluation tool that we can understand, that is measurable, that has a clear objective for everyone and can provide meaning for both the superintendent and the board members. And so I I guess that's one of the things that I feel like we really need a lot of help and support with. And I can only speak from my experience from this one year of being on the board, but I think as we were talking previously, other board members who have more experience with the evaluations would probably agree with that. So I I think in terms of that, I I understand they'll also be doing other things with the board at this retreat other than that, but I think for this, just the one thing, that one thing, it would be a good investment of our resources to spend for that.
Dr. Hedrick, I'm I'm not sure, do you have the original document that we have? I was trying to find it for from the McPherson and Jacobson, their original proposal that we ended up accepting? Because I could, I could have sworn that in the original proposal that that superintendent evaluation and then follow up with Dr. Buck was a part of the original proposal. Can, and and I absolutely could be wrong.
Dennis?
I did not look at that, so I don't, I can't answer that question.
I don't have that in front of me, but I do remember, if I'm correct, that they were going to come back in the, and this was in the fall to talk with the board and provide some, but I don't have that, some information. Now, whether it was in a retreat in June, I don't remember that. I do remember it seemed like something in the fall that they were going to without having that right here in front of me. I can't remember exactly.
You guys are recalling pretty correctly, they wanted to make sure that they could interact with the board in the future to ensure his success. And they did not indicate that there would be any additional fees associated with that. I'd probably have to ask someone else to tell, tell me how much we spent on retaining them for that service and, you know, the overall search as well as what they want to do in the future. To help Judy a little bit, along with the discussion of the process that some of us who are longer tenured board members have been through. I know that was the third one that I went through and and it was despite some of the circumstances around it. They have a pretty clear process with MSBA. And that is what I would say the best practice pro forma approach. I would say that other challenges the district has faced with evaluating the superintendent during my tenure has probably been on on the board member it or members themselves. So we need to take some ownership in that. And and frankly, I did check in on this. Judy, you would appreciate, I did a little research on on the dollars behind this, but the contrast is we got two days of MSBA time and experience last year for eighteen hundred dollars. And and this is, you know, almost, well, it's definitely more than two times that that fee. And you can get them for about a thousand dollars for a day if you need them to to guide through that process. And they're, they've been very good at guiding us through some some trainings around challenging conversations and other other board retreats, frankly. And, you know, other of the big five districts around town spend zero or close to zero and and conduct these workshops on their own. So someone I think has already mentioned the possibility, I think Ryan, you did, of Dr. Buck and of Dr. Buck and Dr. Miller conducting, leading that kind of conversation. And I would encourage my fellow board members who will be in service at that time to, to take them up. I'd like, I'd like for you guys to see what, what he can offer and, and work collaboratively with Dr. Miller and the rest of the leadership team.
Kim?
Okay, um, couple of thoughts. I have really appreciated in the past how well that MSBA has worked with us in our retreats that we have had in June. And they've been, they've been very good about leading us through all of, all of the things that we needed to accomplish during that time. That being said, I do feel like that we could use some extra help in the superintendent evaluation process. And that's something that our own superintendent can't lead us through. So, I mean, that's not something that, that he's necessarily an expert in and, and considering that we'll be the ones evaluating him. So I do think it's important to bring someone in to help us in that process because I will be the first to admit that I, I think that we were lacking in that evaluation process in the last, for years that I've been on the board. I think we could have done much, much better. I think we need to call in our resources. At the same token, what we have here with McPherson and Jacobson are two highly intelligent and well-educated women who have made it there in, during their working career. They've dealt with real-life challenges that boards face as superintendents of, of large school districts like ours. And then you also have the added benefit of these two ladies working side by side with us through our superintendent search. They led that process impeccably. They engendered confidence within our community. And they led well-constructed meetings. They were very transparent in the process. They listened to every piece of input that those committees that we got input from gave to us. And they developed a good rapport, not only with us, but with members of our community and our staff. I think they're well-trusted. And I think they know Lee Summit, after going through this whole process with us, they know us very, very well. And I think if we really truly want to be effective, if the, if the board in the next, you know, I don't know what's going to happen during the election, but the board, whatever the makeup of it is in the next few years, if we truly want to be effective and work for our community and our students and our teachers and all of them, then we need to get on board and we need to get someone to help us really develop as a board and work together and be in sync. And that's my two cents on that. Thank you.
Can I ask Kim a question?
Yes.
My question is, which of those two consultants have been full-time superintendents?
Both of them.
Both of them.
Yes, both of them.
Okay, I, I, I didn't have that information. I understood that one had been an interim superintendent.
And then they both were in HR as well, right? Correct? Yeah, that's, that's, that's huge, I think, in my thought.
Well, we're still talking about $5,000 that most districts don't spend to construct this work in a time that we are concerned about finances.
One, one quick thing for the, for my fellow board members. I did find the proposal that they had made in Phase Five of the proposal from McPherson and Jacobson would be something essentially akin to the superintendent evaluation as, as they had committed to establishing the objectives for our new superintendent, just like we would evaluate two or three objectives and also to help us come up with those performance measures. And I only bring that up because it means that we would still be seeing McPherson and Jacobson in the summer to work with us and Dr. Buck in terms of try, of getting ready to set those expectations and the evaluation procedure for him. While at the same time, I, and of course, I, I, I really do like McPherson and Jacobson, but I would like to see Dr. Buck and, in this case, Dr. Miller, hopefully work together to bring a leadership summit to us. That's kind of where I'm, where I'm shaking out on it.
All right, I've got my hand up and I'm unmuted, so I'm going to go ahead and jump in. Kim, you, you, you stated so many things that I had written on my notes. And Ryan, if we can wrap their evaluation in this retreat, I think there's some time and effort that a conversation with the, the two ladies would be, the two doctors would be invaluable. Kim, you touched on the understanding of our community. They heard from such a broad variety from all of these different committees. I think a transition from one administrative team to the next is going to be, I think, could be enhanced by their, their input. You know, and maybe the $5,000 thing could be pulled down if we utilize their evaluation piece. I'm looking at the number over here, their evaluation as part of this retreat. Maybe they, maybe they're not the ones driving this thing as a moderating group or facilitator, but bring them in as part of that. Because the other part of what I believe they saw was a board at its best and a board maybe at its worst. And I think there are some conversations that we were not privy to, that they were. I think, you know, Ryan, when we, we spoke to the citizen parent group, they were very vocal with the two of us. And I think that, that, that experience by Jeanette and Judy would be very good to bring into our conversation as well. So maybe we have the $5,000 figures being the, the hurdle here, but pull that down and say, look, as part of this retreat, plug in, plug in as opposed to being the full, the full-term facilitators, but enhance it by being part of the larger discussion. Maybe that's a good compromise here.
Yep. Kim?
Okay, I'm building on that discussion. I, I, I like what Ryan said. I like what Mike said. I, I say, of course, your retreat is built to a certain extent by your superintendent and administrative staff working together for part of that. And, and I, what if we send a proposal back to McPherson and Jacobson for just a, for them to come in for one day instead of two and work with us on the superintendent evaluation and have Dr. Buck and, and Dr. Miller work together on that first day where we develop our board priorities and all of that. And, and so we have kind of a combination of the two. And maybe we can get an amended proposal from them and remind them that they were going to come back anyway and help us and see how that figures into the final figure.
I like that.
Yeah. For tonight and then bring it back after you, you guys have had a chance to talk to them.
I think that's a good decision, everybody. I, I like that. I like that compromise. And Mike, I, I hadn't really thought of it the way you had said it. And so I do think that that's important to, to work through that. So I do like that idea of, of making sure that we kind of combine those two things together. And I would be in favor of, of tabling this tonight and, and asking McPherson and Jacobson, hey, can you incorporate that into the retreat as a part of the evaluation process and see what that proposal would get us? So I think that was a good suggestion, Mike and Kim.
Who made the motion that would be able to table it or who would suggest to table or I guess I could?
Make a separate motion right now if we want. We don't have to act on the previous one. We can actually make a motion right now.
I think I made the original one, Mike.
Yeah.
But if somebody wants to change it, that's fine with me.
Yeah, for my fellow board members, I, I would move that we table, table this item until we have spoken with McPherson and Jacobson for an alternative proposal that would incorporate their giving us a one-day training in conjunction with the other day being Dr. Buck and Dr. Emily Miller.
Second. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Okay, thank you. Great discussion. We are moving down to 9.06 Personnel Report.
I move to approve the personnel transactions as presented in contracts issued.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? HR's been working hard. Kim?
Um, I just wanted to, I know we were talking about in an earlier item about all of the things that we're not going to get to do at the end of the year. And you guys know how, I have a special heart for our retirees. And we have some additional folks who are going to be, you know, stepping down. But I, you know, I, I, I find it really hard that there's some of these folks who've spent, you know, so long, their entire careers in LSR seven, and we don't get to honor them at the end of the year with our regular retiree reception. And then the, a lot of their individual schools have individual retirement receptions for them too or gatherings. And so I, I just wanted to say that I, I hope that there's a way that we can find a way to honor each of our retirees, whether that's in a, a special, even a video that we create or something that, that can give them some of the recognition that they so richly deserve.
Thank you, Kim. And yes, we, we are, that's part of, part of what we're discussing.
Right, any other comments? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you.
President Dome, before we move on, Dr. Del Sim, do you have any announcements that you would like to make this evening?
Hey, good evening again, everyone. Did want to announce and hopefully we will be together again in person to bring this person forward per your approval of this Personnel Report. Rachel Flood will be our new principal at Sunset Valley Elementary School through this process. She is excited to join that team. She's been the assistant principal at that building this year. So she will just become the principal at that building, given the approval of this agenda. At a meeting where we can all be together, Rachel looks forward to joining us in person.
Awesome. Good for her. All right, any other discussions on personnel? Thank you. You've been working hard.
We've had a good team and our administrators continue hiring. We are doing it through this feature, actually. Thanks, everyone. We appreciate you.
All right, items of an information, written reports. Our first one was the summer school program. The second one was before and after school. And facilities and maintenance update. Does anybody have any questions on any of those?
I just want to apologize. I did read the, the summer school report and program and I, and I forgot that it was down there. And, and I know that's an ongoing thing. So appreciate all those reports.
Ryan?
Yeah, I just wanted to note for everybody on the before and after-school services that we had that presentation in the Finance Committee as well. And so for the general public and stuff like that, it's probably important for them to know the difficulties that that program is kind of going through right now in the current situation. And especially to commend them for all the work they did throughout this school year in terms of getting that program back in the black, which was awesome. And so thank you to all of those staff and employees who are participating in that program. And we look forward to supporting them again this next year.
Thank you. Kim?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, yeah, you know, we mentioned summer school earlier, but I, I do appreciate the work that's being done on that. And I know, I've had several questions from community members, from parents about, you know, when are we going to find out about summer school? When do we get to enroll and all of that? So I appreciate us pushing out that information so parents will kind of know where we're at, you know, as we, as we navigate through the uncertainties of the next couple of months and what lies ahead for us. The second thing is, I, I kind of wanted to echo what Ryan said. I wanted to thank Don Butler and Kristi Fait and the entire Before and After-School Services staff for their service to our, our students and our parents in this community because they run a really quality program. I know it was at a month and a half or so ago. We had one of our directors featured on one of the major TV stations on some community service projects that they have the kids do. That's just one aspect of what Before and After-School Services does with our kids, is try to engrave in our kids some ideas about what it is to serve your community. I just wanted to point out from their written report, because our viewers out there don't normally see this, but their theme this year is there's no place like belonging. And I thought that was a great theme. And then they had another little motto that was in there that I just was, thought was just fantastic. It says, "At Kids Country, we are a family regardless of where someone was born, the color of their skin, the language spoken, or the challenges faced every day." And I thought that was a fantastic statement, you guys, that encompasses all of our kids. So thank you very much, BASS staff. We appreciate you.
Judy?
I was just going to say ditto to BASS. Outstanding report as always. And they're a very fine example of trying to continue the work that happens in the classroom and to go above and beyond. And then also help the district towards our equity goals and trying to meet the needs of each individual student because they do that a lot. And there have never been a stagnant program. So kudos to their entire staff who worked tirelessly to always keep that program at the forefront and always one of the top programs in the state. So good job to the entire staff and thank you so much.
Yes. Good thoughts there. Anybody else? All right, seeing none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you to everyone. I appreciate your.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for all your patience.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.